All right, if you all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call and order of March meeting of the Southwestern School Board. Jonathan, can you read the vision and mission statement?
The vision is an educated community of higher character. Mission statement, the mission of Southwestern Schools is to provide all students an equal opportunity for exceptional success within a safe and secure learning environment.
Do we have anybody in the audience that will be speaking on an agenda item this evening? Which item would that be?
I will be E.
All right, don't let me pass you by then.
Yes, sir.
Just jump up and holler yourself.
Okay.
Thank you. And don't even have to forget because we are at the preschool report, so Ms. Austin, if you would like to.
So I'd like to say hello to everybody and thank you for having me speak with you guys tonight. I wanted to give you guys an update on the preschool. We've had kind of a bumpy road getting with our licensing with COVID and everything. We had to reschedule our meetings four times due to being shut down and COVID and all of that good jazz. But we finally got to meet our new licensing consultant, Jordan Stout, and he was super impressed with our setup and loved all of our classrooms and everything was just tip shop shaped for him, so that was super awesome. We also were able to renew our past equality with our level three rating with Spark coming back in through. So that was exciting as well for our team. We passed our fire inspection and our enrollment is up. I'm waiting on Jordan to get back with me on raising our numbers for our classrooms. That way we won't have as many on our waiting list because our waiting list, I think we have about 23 students on there for the fall already. And I added six last week. The numbers are looking good also for our preschoolers going into kindergarten this year. A lot of them are really, really excited, including one of my own. We will be doing a preschool registration with the kindergarten when we do that in April 16th. So we're going to be putting an ad in the newspaper for that this week and every week until then. We will also be starting a collaboration with Ivy Tech with their nursing students so they can have some time in-house seeing how littles work and their developmental stuff and things like that as long. I believe they also shadow our nurses, but they're also going to be shadowing our preschoolers and getting a more hands-on feel for that. And then I've been talking with Mr. Johnson about getting the National Honor Society kiddos over so they can get some community service. So I'm pretty excited to share our friends with everybody and everything like that, so.
For your work.
Yeah, and I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
Okay, I can, I can.
I do have one question. What, what is the, I guess, the full reason behind having 23 on a waitlist? Is it not having classroom space, funding, what's the?
With licensing, we can have 60 children. And with each classroom, we have to have, make sure that we have staff to children ratios are safe. So we have to have two staff for so many kids. And with our littlest group, which is the two and a half year old group, we can have two staff members per seven. So when we increase those numbers, then we also have to make sure that we have enough staff to cover those numbers. So as our rooms have gotten bigger, we just added on a new classroom. So instead of having three classrooms, we now have four classrooms. And once Jordan gets back with me on hiring our numbers, we'll be able to fill more kids in those spots.
23 just seems like a big number that we can't provide a service to.
And that's, that's a wide range of ages. So we have our two and a half year olds and then three and a half, four year old room and then the pre-K, which would be the four and a half, five year old.
And is it possible that a family has one student in and one student not?
Um, no, we try and get those families in if they have multiple siblings.
Right now, do you have two adults in each room?
Are we at 60 right now?
We have 57. And we are adding the other three once they hit the age of their two and a half spot, so their spot is already taken.
So 60 is the max right now that we can have?
Yes, sir.
How do you raise, how do you raise the number?
Um, I have to get in contact with licensing and I've been in contact with Jordan and his supervisor has been on vacation. So I'm waiting for them to approve them raising our numbers and I'm just playing the waiting game with them.
Do you know how much they can raise up by?
I think it was 13.
So we could go to 73.
I'm looking into what the options are. It's obviously a successful program and it's keeping students in Southwestern, right? That's where they're going to feed into. So 23 is an alarming number to me. So I don't know if this classroom.
One of the reasons, John, I might say that, that we're having so many is because of the Presbyterian church that closed their preschool. And so they're wanting to come here. And that's why she's been working so hard to try to get the number raised on the licensing. So hopefully that'll go through.
I was more concerned if it was something from either space or funding that we're not providing, what can we do to figure that out?
It's not, it's not that, well, we might have to have another room, you know, right, Kristen? If you end up getting that many more kids in.
We have room if the state will allow us to have more kids, we have room.
So it's just a matter of the license. And until the state takes over the program and starts funding it, we have to have the license in order to operate. So and we have to go follow those rules, so they're very strict on those rules.
Okay, thank you.
Next up will be consideration of minutes and executive session verification. I mean, a motion to accept past minutes as stated in your packet.
I like the motion.
Say, any discussion or changes to those minutes? If not, all in favor? Then consideration of treasuries report, I mean, a motion to approve it as stated in your packet.
Second.
Discussion or changes to that report? All in favor? Which leads us to Ms. Hensley, if you want to talk about the Washington DC field trip.
I do, thank you. I also want you to know I have two very proud graduates of the preschool program who are very successful heading into eighth grade. So thank you very much, and she actually was their teacher, so Bryson Brenna benefited from that. I have a paper for you to kind of outline what we need and then I have the packet that would be going home with parents and students should you approve it. So I'm going to go ahead and pass those out if that's okay with all of you. So if you can each take one of these and then I'll send that one down to Mr. Shotdale. And here's your three, you could pass one here. And then here is the paper. And I just thought that this would be a little easier for you to kind of follow along with me so that if you have any questions, I could try and answer them for you. Now, please know, I'm going to be very honest, I am doing this for reasons that are more than just educational because Bryson Brenna, who are my twins, are in seventh grade and they are going into eighth grade next year. And I know, I know how wonderful on years previous that we have taken the DC trip and it has been a huge success. Eighth grade is the social studies year where they learn about US history from basically the settling of the pilgrims all the way through the end of the Civil War. So getting to tour the nation's capital, seeing all of these different places is very impactful because this is something that they've actually learned about and been taught. And so it kind of brings that to life for us. The reason that I need your permission is twofold. One of them is that as of right now, the group that we're using is World Strides. And World Strides is the group that has previously taken the group on the tour. Now, years and years ago, when I was here, like in 2000, we weren't in charge of doing it ourselves and we had to find sleeping arrangements and busing and all that. It was crazy. World Strides will now do all of that for us as long as they have someone at the school that they can use as a contact person. And I have no problem being that contact person for them. Now, if you open the packet, it actually shows you, and please don't get a paper cut because I've done it twice. It actually will show you the itinerary of where we could go and what we would see during our trip. And we are hitting all the major sites, the Holocaust Museum, Arlington, all of the monuments. If you look at the second page, the top page is just a welcoming page. You flip it over, it tells you day by day what we would be doing and where we would be going. And that is something that if we decide, hey, we really, you know, think we should go see the Vietnam War Memorial, or we really, they can fit that in. So these are just tentative. Now, some of them, I was adamant, I thought we needed to go see. I think we need to go to that National Archives. I think we need to go to the Capitol. I think we need to go to the Holocaust Museum. Those are ones that I really stress, I think we need to go to Arlington. The nice thing about the Arlington part is when they take us in, we actually get to see the changing of the guard. And if there is a possibility, we get to see the laying or laying of a monument there, or not a monument, laying of a wreath at the Tomb of the Unknown. So that's something that we try to fit in. So the reason that I need to come to you, the trip is scheduled for March 9th through March 12th of next year. March 14th through March 18th is when we begin spring break.
It'll be the 13th, wouldn't it?
I think the 13th is the Saturday. Oh, I'm sorry, you are right, I apologize. That is my fault. If you look on there, March 13th, where I have March 14th, that, that should be a March 13th. I apologize, that is my fault, thank you, Mr. Johnson. March 9th is a school day. Now, in years previous, and if you look down there, BCE, before the COVID era, we used to, thank you, that's the social studies and me. We used to do this as it was always the first two days before spring break. I'm hoping that you will allow us to do that. So Thursday, the 9th would be a day where about 1 o'clock, so the kids would be here at school until the morning. The buses would be, the chartered buses from World Stride would come and pick us up. And then we would travel by chartered bus to Washington DC and arrive at our hotel for that evening where we would check in, where we would then be taken over to see the Washington Monument at night. We will go back to visit during the day, but they wanted us to see the reflecting pond at night and also the possibility of seeing it lit up at nighttime. So that would be day one. Day two, which is the 10th, is a school day. And that would be a day that we are touring Washington DC, that would be our first school day in DC. The 11th is the Saturday, we would be touring DC again. And the 12th is the Sunday and we would finish our tour of DC and then head home. We would not get home that evening until almost midnight. Parents would be aware of that, but our spring break starts the next day. So it doesn't really interfere with school related, getting the kids back to school on time, anything like that. The cost, which is what everyone is concerned about, I am not asking for any money from the school board, this can all be done by parents. It is $872 for students if we are able to get them signed up by the end of April. They are giving us a $75 discount if students and parents sign up by the end of April. I have the date for them. And once I get your approval, I can hammer in the exact date and it gives parents approximately three weeks to sign up. They can pay monthly or they can pay bi-weekly, whatever works best for parents, and they would have the whole year until next year to pay. So it doesn't make us walk up to a parent and go, hey, we need you to come up with $900 upfront right now. We can also do fundraising if there's enough interest. But World Strides also offers a program that's like a scholarship for people who are in need of it or would like to apply for it. They have one that's an income-based scholarship. They also have one that is just the kids write, like, why do I want to go to DC? And they can get up to $300 off the cost chaperone-wise. I, of course, would be going, but not only am I going as a mom, I would also be the one that would represent Southwestern. We also have a number of students in the class of 2027 whose parents are either teachers or faculty members, faculty or staff of Southwestern. And so chaperone-wise, I don't know that we're going to have a huge problem in getting appropriate chaperones. And I hate to say that, but we have to do background checks on everyone, anyone that wanted to go. Parents do cost a little more, but that cost includes everything. That's meals, transportation, it is tickets to all of the attractions, it is hotel accommodations. And they offer, also offer accident and health insurance. So if someone's walking and they tread and bust their chin and they need stitches, we can have that taken care of. They've already paid for it, we would take them to an immediate care or whatever, get their stitches, heaven forbid, please don't let that happen. What do I need from you? I need an approval to use two days of school as field trip days. Now, in BCE, before COVID, we, that had been approved before, that's how they did it. And students that did not go on the field trip that day were expected to be at school and school continued on as normal, okay? The second thing would be to give me permission to be your representative with the World Strides organization, hold a parent meeting, hold a student meeting and offer this to them to see if they want to go. Now, if we don't have a lot of parents or students who are interested, we are not locked into anything. The only reason that we need to kind of move on it is to get the cheaper price so that they're not looking at over $1,000 per student. And then the bottom one is benefits. This is what I see as benefits, it allows our students to see the national capitals. Some of our kids don't make it outside of Southern Indiana, this is a chance. But also because of COVID, because of funding and cuts and things like that, some of the schools are not offering trips anymore. This maybe is a way to offer a trip and then someone says, hey, you know, Southwestern takes their kids to Washington DC, we should send our kid there. That's money in our pocket. That gives another kid a chance to come to our school and see how great we are. And then they stay with us and they continue through and they graduate and we can say, hey, you're a proud Southwestern graduate. I also think it's positive exposure. Nothing against the Madison Courier, but sometimes I think they think only Madison is the school. We're here too. So, you know, let's do a, let's, let's do something about our trip. Let's have the kids come and present something to you. Let the Madison Courier have pictures, let the kids talk about it because our school's awesome. And sometimes I think we don't get the exposure just because we're not on the hilltop and we're not the victuals. But guess what? You want me in charge, we're going to get exposure, I promise. So I'm asking for you to give me those things. I know you may not be able to make a decision tonight, but I am presenting you what I've got. I would invite all of you to come. If you want to spend four days with me in Washington DC, come on, you know you'll have fun. And if not, then just know I promise to take really good care of everybody. And I hope that you feel safe in letting me represent Southwestern, not only to World Strides, but also in our nation's capital. So there you go. Any questions?
Is there a minimal number of kids that are required to?
As of right now, no. Typically, I will say she did tell me this, if we have less than 20 students or people total, what they would do is another small school like ours would probably be put on the bus with us. But we would know which school it was so that we could reach out to them and we could share information. And then if we had any concerns, we could get with World Strides and say, you know, I really don't think that's a good mix of people. But if they, if, if we have 40 people, the bus is not for us. So the, and it's a chartered bus, but if we don't have 40 people, then we can be put in with the group. So she said, for example, there's a small school right outside of Cincinnati that is a private school and they usually go, but they never have enough people. So she said, we may stop on our way through at that school and pick them up and then they would go. But they would not be like on our tour with us. It would strictly be, we have our own tour guide, we have our own dinner accommodations, we have our own hotel accommodations. At night in the hotel, they do have security that will stay on our floor and that is security's job just to make sure that everybody, you know, kids aren't running around all night long. As a parent, as a teacher, I would be very likely sleepy just to make sure everything was okay.
How many students in this seventh grade?
This is one of our very smallest classes, there's only 88 students. Now, I will offer this, I know our eighth grade, the current eighth grade did not get to go on the trip. I would be okay with your permission to offer that to them. My only concern is they are now going to be high schoolers and some of them are playing sports. And that may fall during like practice or games, I don't know. And I haven't, and I just sprung this on Mr. Strong, so he may not know that.
I was going to chaperone Riley's, so two years ago?
Yes.
So it's very similar to that. It's, it's, it's before baseball starts their practice officially during, they'll start during fall, during spring breaks, they'd be back for that.
Yes.
Basically, if a freshman boy were playing in the.
Tournament?
Say, that would, well, that would be the semi-state week, be the regional championship week, state week, or the semi-state.
Okay.
So that would be the only follow-off there if a, if a boys' basketball player would play that Saturday, we would be leaving.
We, okay, so.
I can double-check all that, though, what next year is.
And I can take to World Strides that I, there is a clause that if for some reason someone cannot attend, they can get a refund of their money, they just don't get the whole amount back. I think it's like a $75 surcharge or something like that. So if we had that situation where our boys' team made it to state and a boy couldn't go, then we could arrange that.
I'll double-check the dates.
Okay.
If that's something you're going to pursue, I will definitely double-check it.
Right, but that is something that, if that's what you would like for me to do, I will happily do that.
I like that idea, because I know my son's an eighth grader this year and he doesn't get to go and they've looked forward to that since elementary school.
Yeah, I, I chaperone.
Okay.
I speak the same, as a kid with an eighth grader, I agree the same.
Okay, so.
At least make it an optional for him, obviously he won't get maybe a mandatory, you know, a. Well, that's understandable, but at least make it an option. I know Tom's got a daughter in eighth grade that couldn't go this year.
And, and you, and I, and I know even our high school principal's daughter is an eighth grader. So if that is something that you would like for me to pursue or at least offer it to them, I will happily do that just because I do feel bad that that class missed it. I reached out to a former teacher and asked how he had done this and he kind of hooked me up with World Strides. And then I spoke with Noelle Shotdale, who last year was going to chaperone and it didn't work. And she said that they were very helpful and because it was canceled on their end, there were, there were no concerns. Just this week, the Capitol building has been reopened so that you can tour the Capitol. The only one that you can't tour that we got to tour years ago was the White House. Now, they will drive you by the White House, but we actually got to go into it and I don't think that that will ever happen again, honestly. So I'm grateful for that. But I really do feel like that Southwestern's a great school and if this can help us maintain kids or, or get more kids, what do I need to do to help make it happen? And I will be happy to, you know, represent us and do all the legwork and do all the groundwork and be the contact person. And I just need your permission and your approval that we can do this and move forward with it. And like I said, you're all welcome to come, you know you want to spend a weekend DC with me.
We might meet you there.
You might meet me there.
I don't know about riding the bus.
Oh, come on, I'd be fun on the bus. But yeah, so I'm, that is all the information I have. The packets that you have in front of you are the exact packets that will go home. Now, the dates in the packets are wrong. She actually had sent these to me in advance, the young lady did, and I said, ma'am, I can't say yes, I have to get permission. So she said, if you give me your permission, that she'll tell me the date that they have to be signed up by to get the discount. I can change that on that. And for the open parent meeting night, I can explain all that and make sure that if there's any parent that's confused or how to do it, there's a contact number that I can give them and all the information that's needed. So any other questions for me? No? Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have a motion to present?
I, I mean, I think it's self-explanatory. I made a motion to allow Ms. Hensley to be the representative. Obviously, I don't know about approving, I mean, I hate to say, let's approve about everything and then you say, hey, we didn't get the 10 kids, 20 kids, whatever that's required. So I made a motion to approve Ms. Hensley as the representative for Southwestern School to be the contact with World Strides in hopes to get this moving for seventh and hopefully eighth grade if you could reach out.
So you would like me to do the class of 2027 and 2026? That is, that is fine. I will do that if.
Say it. Any discussion on it? Obviously, I've had kids who went with World Strides and, um, it has, I mean, it's proven. So I don't have any issues with re-offering this. So all in favor?
Would you like for me, once I've established it, to come back to the board and let you know that we have enough students and that, you know, this is the tentative number going so that you're just aware? Or can I email you guys or what, how would you like to know that it is a definite?
I think an email would be sufficient, we already made a motion to put you as the representative, we're waiting for you to discuss.
Keep it a little bit proud, it's progressive, but run with it.
All right, well, then I will do that and I will invite your class mates as well, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, moving on to Agenda I. This is bus driver testing reimbursement request. Obviously, you know, there is a fee to get bus drivers and we have absorbed a lot of those fees in the past and we've had some drivers pay because they need cash, they pay down their own pockets. And we need to approve them to reimburse those people their money. Three people were Caleb Hubbard, Walter Hubbard, Jason Watson, all paid $100 fees in which the school normally takes care of. So we need a motion to reimburse those individuals.
I'm going to make the motion to reimburse. I'll second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor? Next up, we have a proposal for a head custodian position. Stay in your packet. Obviously, we've talked about this in the past, really, there is no hierarchy in the custodial world within our facility. Supposed to be creating a head custodian supervisory role. It's a full-time position, it ranges between $37,000 and $42,000 a year. One thing to note, it is, the hours is tentatively from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, that way they see both shifts. As you would say, they have interaction with both shifts. And then ultimately during the summer, they report from 7:00 to 3:00. And then you have all the listing in your packet on job descriptions and so forth. So if you want to create a head custodian spot, I'll need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Discussion on that position.
Have we ever had one before?
Yes. Yes.
The only question I had was, it says 37, 42, is that just based on, or we want to come up with an actual number?
And one thing to note too, I think it's important for people to know is that it is a working custodial.
is that it is a working custodial supervisor. So they will not only serve as a supervisor, but they also will serve as a custodian.
That rules your opinion.
Any other discussion on this position?
Will that include any benefits?
Yes, it's a full-time position, so it will include full benefits.
Doesn't matter to me.
All in favor then?
Aye. Thank you, Dad.
Moving on to our donations. We'd like, uh, request the school board approval accepting the following donations. We have a hundred-dollar donation for Cannon Mahoney for middle school's baseball. Two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation from Northern American Stainless for middle school baseball. A hundred-dollar donation from Kayla Tyer and Supply for golf and two-hundred-dollar donation from Shannon Crowley for golf. Appreciate these generous gifts. I'll need a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Next up is our personnel. As always, we'll just do them all and take care of it to end. So first up, we have a retirement from elementary teacher, Brede Madison Roach. Uh, we have a request for sabbatical leave from Brandon Frye. An FMLA request from Captain A. Darla Seibauer. Employment opportunity for high school teacher, Melinda Gammons. Employment, elementary art teaching aide and the summer custodian, Christina Congrit. Employment for middle and high school library media specialist, Cindy Myers. Employment for elementary custodian, Destiny Gross. Employment for substitute bus driver, Kayla Hubbard. Employment for substitute bus driver, Walter Hubbard. Employment for elementary technology teaching aide, Christian Burkhardt. Employment of English academic Super Bowl coach, Amy Hill. Employment for social studies academic Super Bowl coach and JV assistant softball coach, Camille Leach and Tom Crowens. And employment for varsity JV girls tennis coach, Chris Hill. And if I haven't forgot anything, I'll need a motion to approve all the personnel requests.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
We do have, Melinda is here, so she will be our new biology teacher. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Do you have your speech ready?
Uh, no. I'm just glad to be back.
I did.
She's returning from the dark side.
All right. That means we will move on to our conference request. And we have Lisa Taylor requesting to go to Elevate Summer Twenty Twenty-Two Online Conference. This is June first through August first. That'll cost fifty dollars from the education fund. And believe it or not, that is the only conference request. So I need a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Laura, that leads to budget and financials.
Looks like you missed me last meeting. See, there's a lot of things on here. Okay. Number one, um, we have an appointment with the, uh, Jefferson County Public Library Board that, uh, we are required to fill and it's a four-year term. Uh, Robin Ryle was appointed, um, for half of the term from, for, to, uh, finish out the term of Barbara McKinney. And, um, she is willing to, uh, serve for the term of July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And we need that approval to appoint her to the board. Need a motion, please.
We have a motion to appoint her?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Thank you. Uh, the next thing I have is a resolution, uh, twenty twenty-two, day twelve. And that is a resolution to, uh, transfer funds from the education fund into the operations fund. And I'm asking for five hundred thousand to be moved right now, uh, for cash flow. As you can remember, uh, when they, uh, combined all the funds together and, uh, put them all into the operations fund and split the operations and, and, uh, education fund from capital projects and transportation and all those other funds. Um, they also moved, uh, several of our accounts from what used to be the general fund into the operations fund. Well, part of that was the superintendent's office, all of our salaries got moved into there and, and a lot of the, um, custodial's got moved. It's a lot of different funds that got moved, um, appropriation-wise. Now, you realize there's a difference between budget and cash. Um, so as the budget things got moved, they didn't move the cash to go with it. So, um, we are allowed to borrow, not borrow, we are allowed to transfer up to fifteen percent of the, uh, education fund, revenue to move into the operations to follow those appropriations that they moved without the cash to follow. So that's what we're doing. Um, we, we could move up to over a million dollars out of that fund. Um, I have the exact amount, a million, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars we could move. Um, I only ask to move what is necessary at the time. So this is a one-time resolution for right now. I may be coming back and saying I need to move it again, the cash. And then if there is extra excess at the end, we'll move it back into the education fund so it's there so we can move it back and forth as needed. For cash flow purposes, but I will need a, uh, roll call vote on it, please. And a motion.
We have a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve.
I'll make a motion, right?
I'll second.
Any discussion or clarification before we vote? All right, if that's the case, well, this is a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Lacy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Okay, next is the, uh, scrubber at the high school. Um, that has been taken care of. Uh, I sent you a note, I thi, I believe, telling you what was going on with the scrubber. Uh, we have gotten that problem solved and, um, the company is sending us a different scrubber that, um, I think, um, uh, Matt and Roger liked even better. And it will be for the same price that you allowed me to order the scrubber for. So we might as well just table this, um, and we're gonna go ahead and if it's okay with you ordering from the same company that we started from. But it will be a bit, little bit, little bit different, but in their opinion, it was a better scrubber. Okay?
Well, I'm fine with it. I wasn't fine with them charging us for them not shipping to us.
No, um, we were really arguing with them over that, that they, um, after they saw it, it wasn't easy to get five hundred more dollars out of us. They agreed to find something that would work. So it's all taken care of, same price. Um, next is, are the mowing contract bids. Um, I sent you the list of all the bids that we have. Um, this is for a thirty-week, uh, March through April and, uh, through October of each year, uh, March or April through October. Uh, once a week, um, we had, uh, Hardee's Lawn Care, seven hundred dollars. Cloud's Lawn Care, seven hundred dollars. Free Mowing, eight hundred. Fletcher Lawn Service, one thousand. Montian Order, ten fifty. Joe Zeller's, eleven hundred. Sprawley's Elite Lawn Care, thirteen hundred. Land Works, thirteen seventy-five. And Jester's Lawn Care, fifteen fifty. And, um, this is for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four mowing seasons. Um, the Cloud's Lawn Service will, are taking care of this year. He had a two-year contract, but we do it this time of the year, so we've got it, the next one's ready to go.
Any issues with our current provider?
I asked Roger, he had no complaints. Um, I haven't heard the, uh, administrators complain.
No.
Tom, you all right with them, with your grounds?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to keep Cloud's Lawn Care.
I'll second.
It's pretty easy since they love us, too, so.
Okay.
All in favor? This is the last one. Get in the business. Sorry.
Okay.
You talk that over, over thirty, thirty weeks. Eight hundred and fifty bucks, man, over thirty weeks. Anyway.
We did. Okay. Ready to move on to carbon monoxide detectors. Um, when they did our insurance walkthrough like they normally do, they always find something wrong. Well, they found this time that we didn't have carbon monoxide, uh, detectors. Um, and we found out that they have to be connected to the fire alarm system. And Jason can probably tell you more about that if you have questions. I'm not, that's not my expertise, but it's gonna cost seven thousand, six hundred and forty-eight, eighty-four to do this and it's over the five thousand limit, so I needed to bring it back to you to get your approval to move forward.
And that's to, uh, for the audit?
That is, yeah, that will satisfy the.
Insurance audit?
Yes, that will satisfy the insurance.
The note at the bottom just says separate elementary and high school, but that bids for both, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And we should note in the motion that we are, this is for Centos to do the work, right?
Yes.
So they have their name in the minutes. All right, so we have a motion and a second for Centos to install carbon monoxide detectors. Any other discussion on it? And all in favor?
Okay, then we have bids for the high school cafeteria floor. Um, they have been telling me that it is in bad repairs and needs to be fixed. So we got quotes, uh, from Bickers Flooring and Flooring Gallery for, with the basketball courts being included and without the basketball courts being included. Um, it's, um, twenty thousand, five hundred from Bickers Flooring, uh, including the basketball court and twenty-one, one eighty-two, forty-nine from Flooring Gallery, including the basketball courts. I don't know what your thoughts are on it or questions. You tell me. We need approval before we can move forward on it.
Do we still have games now?
I don't know, Tommy.
We've never had games in the cafeteria. It's kinda like, do you wanna get rid of an asset or, you know, keep it as a liability? If you keep the courts on there, you're able to use it for practices. Um, we've used it for younger kids 'cause they're smaller courts. Um, right now, the, the archery uses it at least twice a week, so they don't need the, need that. But, um, when we get kinda crazy with basketball, it's nice to have it as an available, uh, spot in case we need it. And we've used it sometimes on Mondays to, to have that, especially now with the Parks Department, um, putting in the girls' youth league, uh, to counteract our boys' youth league that we have already in set. So with extra space needed, it might be occasionally used. It'd be nice to have it. It's not a necessity, but, uh, like I said, it, you keep an asset with that. So, I mean, I hate to lose a, the ability to, to, to use that as a learning tool, but, uh, we can always keep the goals up.
It's a difference of, uh, forty-four hundred dollars, it looks like, um, whether we do the courts or not. Cheapest, that's the cheapest bid. And the reason I'm asking you to go ahead and make a decision tonight, because it's a summer project and this is only gonna be held for two weeks, this quote becomes of the materials and everything.
How long has it been since we had our last work done? Is there any type of a, I don't know what they call it, guarantee or?
Warranty.
Warranty?
It was when Telford was superintendent, so. Yeah, I wanna say about ten to twelve years ago.
Yeah. Probably.
Yeah.
So since then, we've had the Blue Gym built, which allows us.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
I was just thinking.
I mean, you know, we, again, if we keep the goals up, it still becomes a place for you to have kids practice and learn things. I mean,
Yeah.
I don't think we'd ever have a game in there with anything we do. So, I mean, if we needed to have a middle, little, small kids' game, we could have it here in the cafeteria.
Yeah, and I know they use that for practice and stuff.
So I don't see there being a major problem if you got rid of the lines.
What were your thoughts, John?
I just think, I don't know if we utilize that enough in this situation, spending four thousand dollars. I'm sure if Tommy had an issue and was in a crunch, he could get a, a guy out with some tape and tape a free line down and use the basket.
And we do have the goals, so, I mean, the goals will be the major part, so I don't really think the high school cafeteria needs the three-point lines and, uh.
I think it would be different if we were talking about telemetry. Television does give the.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I agree.
So the, the quote I saw from Bickers, the, the forty-four hundred dollars is just basically for a basketball stripe kit?
You probably got something wrong. I don't know.
I doubt it. That sounds kinda odd.
What he had to do last time is, if I remember correctly, 'cause they went and repaired some of it, that, to, has to go in and, and, uh, put those in bit by bit and has to cut the tile to meet with that.
So it's not on top, a surface line?
Exactly, 'cause. It's, it's a very, it's not as easy as it looks. It's kinda time-inducive and, um, it's a little difficult. It was, I, I remember him having the extra lines left in last time, so if something popped out, he could put them back in. But it's, it's a, it's a process to do.
Yeah, I see what you're saying now.
I would move to, uh, replace the floor minus the lines, who do we decide to do it? Who, who are we using currently?
Well, we used Bickers last time, I know, and, and I've, I've hired him personally. I think he does good work.
I know he's done our carpets, so too, over here.
I would have a problem hiring him.
She did all of our holes.
Then that's my motion.
And I second your motion.
Perfect.
Any further discussion on this matter? All in favor?
Tommy, we're not seeing that one, thank you. Okay.
Won't hurt me at all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda, um, as, as I got, got back into town and started going through my mail, I noticed from the, uh, Division of School Finance, um, in order to assist school corporations that had an immediate need, uh, to purchase technology or construction projects, there were two, um, two loans available. There are the Common School Loans. Uh, we have a Common School Construction Loan available to us and we have a Common School Technology Loan. We usually take advantage of the Common School Technology Loans, which are five-year loans, um, because the. because the interest rate has been one percent, the last several ones that we've had with them. But in order to move forward with these, we're trying to work up something and get them going, but the deadline is April thirteenth. I have to have everything into them. So I'm asking tonight to, if the board would approve the Common School Techno, Technology Loan application, and that's going to be used for upgrading our laptops or whatever you want to call the technology stuff that we have to replace year after year. That has really helped us tremendously on that. So that's the first thing I would like to ask, if you would give me approval to apply. That's not saying we'll get it, it's just asking that you give me permission to apply for the Common School Technology Loan.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to apply for the loan.
We have a second? Any discussion on it? So, so we know that this is just an application?
Right.
It's not even an in or anything.
When there's no application fee, no penalties?
Nothing. We just, we apply, and if we're one of the lucky schools, we get it.
Got you.
So.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
You have, sorry, you have the people to help you apply with that, or is it an easy deal or?
That one's already filled out, it's ready to go because I told, I gave that one to Kevin Dillman, and he has that one ready to go if board gave me permission to send it in.
Perfect, thank you.
And the other one is a Common School Construction Loan. As you know, there's several things that need to be looked at, there's always things that need to be taken care of. And I'd like to apply for the permission to apply for the Common School Construction Loan as well. Again, that deadline is April thirteenth, that's why I tried to send you all the information, so I just need permission to apply, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion on it? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura.
I think I'm finished. Back to you guys.
All right. Audience participation, will anybody wants to speak on anything that we haven't touched on? If not, we will go to superintendent's report.
Okay, I have a pinch hitter. Tom is going to give us an update on sports for the year so far.
How you guys doing?
Good, Tom.
I'd like to first introduce Travis Wilson here. Travis is my intern, he's from U of L. He has done an amazing job, I couldn't ask for somebody better. Done a lot of great things, he's going to be with us through the end of the school year and helping us with the stuff, so if you see him around, that's who that is. Helped us in the sectionals, did a great job, and couldn't ask for a better person. Can't say enough good about you, man. Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you all.
Thanks, Ralph.
So far this year, we've had a busy year, hosted two sectionals, Turkey Shootout, we always host the wrestling conference tournament, those all went wonderfully. The sectionals went amazing, we got the boys and the girls at the same time, made a, made a great, Morgan was there, and some of you helped, appreciate your help if you were there. Just, just a great thing, didn't have any complaints from any of the schools or the officials. I just say they've been very happy with us doing that. Going forward, this is a realignment year, we will know within the next month what sectionals we will be in for next year for everything. That being said, once that happens, we then meet as individual sectional groups and discuss who will be hosting sectionals, so we hope to apply and get the boys and the girls again and volleyball and anything else we're allowed to host with our facilities. So it's a couple things, we even got to host a soccer regional this year, first ever, with being hosted at Madison, so we appreciate them helping us with that. We don't have lights and our field is in need of repair, so it was nice to, to get with them on that, but we did a great job hosting. As far as our kids, we had a lot of success, four boys, two girls and four girl swimmers all made the all-conference team this past winter. Did a wonderful job. Coach, Coach Zach Newsbaum got ORBC Coach of the Year, I'm sorry, Madison Courier Area Coach of the Year, which was Madison Courier. Zach Cole also got Academic All-State, All-State Honorable Mention for the FMAIBCA, which is the coaches association. And important to me is the ORBC Mental Attitude Award, which goes, all the ADs and coaches vote on that for as far as grades and attitude and leadership roles. Zach also got Courier Player of the Year from, from Madison Courier. Wrestling, Keegan Gross, representative of school well this year, and I went to the regionals. And swimming, Reagan Crawford, was a state finals qualifier and was also named Madison Courier Swimmer of the Year, so that's, those are great achievements from our kids this year. It's been the most profitable winter we've had in ten years, looking back at records with Dawn. I can't tell you exactly how much better, it's going, it's going to be even better. We haven't been able to move, at the end of the year, we move money from our athletic concessions account to our athletic account, because athletic concessions is a fundraiser for us. We're probably going to move the most money I've ever moved from that account to the other at the end of the year. Dawn didn't have that exactly for me yet because we've still got some things to finish up from the winter season, but we're about ten thousand dollars ahead of, ahead of the, the schedule we were supposed to have two years ago. So we're, we're back where we've been. COVID hit us pretty hard, but we didn't have to do, we, we told all the coaches to kind tighten the belt a little bit, so we're going to reward those coaches and kids that have done that by making sure they get a lot of new equipment. You'll see a lot more new equipment at the track, for instance, this year. Baseball's getting some good stuff, softball's pretty good, taken care of, golf getting the things they need, tennis is getting some new stuff, so, and we'll put that around for everybody else next year too. So really want to thank my coaches and athletes for, for doing that, and all of them banded together and worked a golf scramble, our first ever golf scramble. This past fall was a major success, and we feel like it'll be even bigger success next year. Just can't say enough good things about our coaches, we have a lot of great people that work for us. I'd say one, I'd be leaving another one out, but every coach we have that works for me, I think does a great job from high school, middle school, sacrifices a lot for these kids, and they do a great job. Of course, I want to thank some people, I want to thank the school board again for the opportunities, you guys give me the support you give us. Administration's been wonderful this year, from Matt Owens and Kristen and Jason and Jeff working the sectionals, to other things as well they do throughout the year, just do a great job. Marcy Cole for being our trainer, she does a wonderful job for us, and our partnership with KDH. Kobe Cloud does a lot of great things for us, including running our little kids program for the boys, and Scott Davidson in the parks for running it for the girls, they do, they did a very good job in the first time around this year. So I want to thank Stan Mack, who has been wonderful with transportation, and of course, through, through Jason, we appreciate all the hard work that Stan does through us. Sue Seigman did a great job again this year being our middle school administrator, not administrator, but supervisor for us in maintenance and all our coaches and athletes. We're looking forward to a great spring, and if you have any questions, I'll be, feel free to answer those for you.
I did have one complaint.
Yes.
In the concessions. We ran out of pickles very early. We're just going to have.
Even Shifley's did.
I'll double it up for you.
I think the prom will be affected because we ran out of pickles.
COVID shipping problems.
I'm going to blame that on COVID, this is my last chance to do that.
We did too, and, and Mr. Johnson, but yeah.
And I do think, I want to tell you this, though, while I have the floor, Mr. Matt Johnson, his first year of being a worker for us in the concessions for the junior class, has done an amazing job. And I really want to, he and his wife both, just a godsend, could, could have done a lot of things. We made a lot of extra money this year because of them, so.
Clearly, yours genus chili.
Yeah. But if you have any questions for me, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Tom.
Appreciate it very much.
With that, we are looking at the future board meeting dates. It's April the 25th. Do you have any comments or information amongst the board? In the past time? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, everyone.